Good evening. It is six o'clock and we are going to call to order this regular meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, Tuesday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. If everyone would please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Before we get started, we'll just let the record reflect that the mayor and the vice mayor are on their way here along with the city manager. They were tied up in court mediation today, but we've been told they're on our way. So we're going to go ahead and get started. And what we'll do, just to give a quick rundown, we'll go through our agenda here. The first couple of items are proclamations. And we'll do those, items one and two. If they have not arrived yet at that point, we'll actually take a recess before we get into item three to give them some more time to get here. But they should be here soon. So we'll go ahead and start with council comments from the council that is here this evening. And I'll go ahead and just start, just to throw out something. Earlier this week, a new restaurant opened in downtown Bristol, Virginia on Piedmont Avenue. It's called Union Forty-One. It's a great spot. I've not eaten there yet myself, but Chef T is the person running that. And she has been on several cooking shows, including, let's see, Hell's Kitchen and something on the Food Network as well. So you can call her a celebrity chef, and she wanted to open up right here in downtown Bristol. So that's great. I've heard some good reviews already about that. And speaking of that, which is in downtown, I've seen some recent advertisements from Believe in Bristol about downtown Bristol, some things coming up this weekend at St. Patrick's Day, and lots of food and live music across many different venues, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, all in downtown. So I encourage you to check out their website or follow them on social media to stay updated about what's happening in downtown Bristol as the weather warms up. So any comments?
We also have seen a recent announcement of, and I apologize, I can't remember the name of it, but there's going to be an indoor mini golf moving in on Euclid, and I'm excited to see that. It's another activity we're trying to do a lot in the community to attract younger people, and that's a great activity, mini golf that you can play regardless of the weather. And we're about to come up on our rainy springtime, so be able to do that regardless of how it is outside. And we've got these two proclamations coming up, but we have a lot of things around the year that are worth recognizing. One of those coming up, actually this week, is the Child and Adult Care Food Program Week. Our various organizations do a lot to make sure that people in need have food. There are a lot of other needs out there, but if somebody doesn't have food, the rest isn't going to make a whole lot of difference in the long term. So they do a great job, and I would like to recognize those efforts. I guess we just have a lot of really good things going in the city. Yes, we have some struggles that we're working our way through, but we also have a lot that's really good going on in this city.
So we'll move ahead to our adoption of our agenda. And Joey, do you have the sign-up sheets as well? There's about five, so we'll look for a motion to adopt our agenda as presented or with changes, whichever way.
I think I'll move to adopt the agenda with one modification, and that is to move the public comment for non-agenda items to the beginning where it used to be. We only have a relatively small number of comments this evening.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt our agenda with the changes stated. So clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move into matters, excuse me, to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. Again, so these non-agenda items, just a quick rundown, if you've not been here before, what we'll normally do is I'll call your name, and if you'll come up to the podium, to the microphone, and state your name and then your address for the record. And the green light will come on. Everyone gets three minutes to speak. As your time is running low, the yellow light will come on, and when your time is up, the red light will come on. So we ask you to please be courteous of your time and everyone else's. So we'll go ahead, and I'll call the first person up. First person that signed up here is Mr., I believe it's Mark Dixon.
Howdy.
Good evening.
My name is Markley Dixon. I'm a director with Right to Life of East Texas and founder of what's called the Sanctuary Cities for the Unborn Initiative. Came here all the way from Texas. I've been involved in an effort that has successfully passed ordinances in sixty-five cities and two counties outside of Virginia that has kept abortion industries out of their community. In Lubbock, Texas, we successfully shut down Planned Parenthood operations that were abortion operations. We also kept Holman's Health from setting up shop in Hobbs, New Mexico. I have a list of the cities that I've been involved with, and I'll give those to you here shortly. There's a lot of interest in this community to keep abortion from becoming a longstanding fixture of this community. A lot of citizens want abortion out of Bristol. And my attorney is Jonathan F. Mitchell. He's a former law clerk for Justice Scalia, former solicitor general for the state of Texas, architect of the Texas Heartbeat Act, which I was sued in, and we survived that. All nine justices, Supreme Court, believed that my case should be dismissed, and it was. But we've had a lot of success with this. We have an ordinance that we have drafted for Bristol, Virginia, that we believe that if it was passed, it would survive a challenge, and it would shut down the abortion industry. We're willing to give this ordinance to you. If there is any litigation that comes as a result, my attorney is willing to represent the city at no cost to the city and taxpayers. My name is Markley Dixon. I'll be in town for a few days. If anyone wishes to communicate with me, I would love to connect. I also have a list of the cities that have already passed similar ordinances, and I would just like to leave that with you guys as well.
Absolutely. All right.
But this is something that we've seen success with, and so many people have said there's nothing that can be done, but I'm here to say that there's something that can be done, and we've seen it happen in sixty-five cities and two counties outside of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. The next person that signed up for public comment is Father Chris Hess.
Hi. I'm Father Chris Hess. I live at nine seventy Chester Street. I'll be quick. You guys know me. I've lived here almost five years as the pastor of St. Anne's. What not everybody knows about me is that I'm also a second career priest. So in addition to everything else I've done, I've got combined seventeen years' experience firing EMS. I've been a firefighter, I've been a paramedic, been a field training officer, and I spent some time as a chaplain. And in that role, I helped organize peer support in multiple departments. I was part of a critical incident response team for the greater Richmond area, which means I was part of a team of people, and we were the ones that got phone calls when somebody had a really bad shift. That's some of the more difficult tasks that I've had to take on in EMS. I learned something while I was doing that, that if you go into a city that has a Planned Parenthood clinic or a clinic like that, and you go to a fire station and ask the medics, what's the address of Planned Parenthood? They'll tell you like that. Not because they're there all the time. I remember when we memorized the addresses where we were there all the time. They know that address because they're afraid of it. They're scared to death of it. They know that if they hear that address after their tones drop, they're going to have a really bad shift. These are people who will do anything they can to avoid an ambulance being seen outside their building, and if they call for one, everybody knows it's bad. You know, people say that, oh, they're adrenaline junkies, they love these big calls. Well, there's some things that no medic ever wants to see. I know of cases like this in Richmond and in Virginia Beach. I have firsthand knowledge of the medics who have struggled to deal with the things that they've experienced because of this, and the stories are just so difficult to hear. And I hate hearing things like this from people that I call my brothers and sisters. We keep hearing that this is completely safe. It's not. We keep hearing that this is something that a decision made behind closed doors that doesn't affect anyone else. It does. I know, we probably haven't had any incidents like this at the clinic here. I'm sure I would have heard of that if it had, but I'm telling you, give it time. There's a lot worse things happening in bigger cities than ours, and it's coming here. Do you just wait until you have a clinic in this city doing full-term abortions? I hope that horrifies you as much as it does me. I just try and imagine, and for anyone who thinks that's not coming to Bristol, you're not paying attention to what's happening now. There is too much money to be made. They are marketing this in too many different states. Of course, this is coming here. You've got some really good people working for this city as first responders. Some of them are volunteers. I spent enough time as a volunteer medic. I know how proud those people are to serve this city. We need to look out for them, too. So please just think about the impact that this has on the people working for this city.
Thank you, Father Hess. The next person that signed up is Deborah Brown.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Brown, and I live at seventeen oh five Lee Highway in the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of the large crowd that was outside a little earlier before this meeting. I represent over a hundred of those people that came out today, and also many others who couldn't make it. We know you have heard extensive public comment on this issue, the abortion ordinance, over the last few months. So out of respect for your time and in appreciation for your office, we are limiting our remarks today to just three speakers. I understand that you would rather not address the abortion issue at all. Maybe you think that we should lobby in Richmond instead of here. After all, the city has a lot of pressing items, a lot of litigation already going on. You are also in the midst of a very busy budget session where you have to make difficult choices. So why even bother to take up such a contentious issue? Because it matters to us, the citizens of the city. Because sometimes there are things that are more important than money or threats of lawsuits. Because it's the moral thing to do. Because it's the right thing to do. You all know this in your hearts. We're sure you never wanted this clinic here in the first place. The family of the fifteen-year-old girl from Dickinson County allegedly coerced into an abortion, her family didn't want the clinic here either. Even the landlord of the building with the clinic in it doesn't want it here. But it is here now, and given what our neighbors are doing to limit abortion clinics in their counties, it appears that if you do nothing, not only will we continue to have this existing clinic, but we may very well get several more. We cannot believe that this is the result you want. There is very little that you or we can do to influence what happens in DC or Richmond, but you have significant power and authority over what goes on in this city. We've elected you to do a difficult job and make some tough decisions. You might wish you didn't have the power to do anything about the situation, but the reality is that you do. Sixty-five cities and two counties outside Virginia have used their local powers to restrict abortion. More importantly, in the last month, two counties have used their local powers to restrict abortion. You possess that same power, and we ask that you use that power to do justice and pursue mercy to our most vulnerable citizens. Before I retired as a college professor specializing in twentieth-century American history, I wanted to leave you with a quote. This was from President John F. Kennedy. "There are risks and costs to action, but they are far less than the long-range risks of comfortable inaction." We know it's not comfortable, but we urge you to action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. The next person that signed up is Kristen Burkholder.
Good evening, members of the council. My name's Chip Burkholder, nine sixty Arlington Avenue, Bristol, Virginia. Born and raised, lived here all my life. I am one of the two deputy commissioners for the Virginia Workers Compensation Commission. Our Bristol regional office is at four twenty-five State Street. My colleague, Judge Wise, is our managing deputy commissioner, and we're having an issue with the homeless population outside of our office, and I've yielded some of my time to Mr. Wise. We both signed up, but we have the single issue.
We do have the same issue, and it's a concern for the security of our staff at our office as well as the litigants that have to come into our office. In case you don't know, we are located in the old bank building at four twenty-five State Street. We have the entire second floor. We have two courtrooms there, and we are designated by the Virginia statute as a courthouse. And we maintain our own armed security within the confines of the building, but that has not stopped us having issues with regard to the transient or homeless population outside. It has been extremely exacerbated since Tennessee passed their law in July of two thousand twenty-two. Prior to that, we would have occasional interactions, and it would not be threatening in any way. But since that time, we have a large group that is consistently present in our parking lot and in the area. Our landlord indicates that that property belongs to the city. It is not under their responsibility, and they don't have any control over that. So we're seeking your help on behalf of the commission. We relocated in two thousand sixteen to Bristol, Virginia, from Lebanon, Virginia. Our main office, obviously, is in Richmond with our commissioners. We do have regional offices throughout, but our office here is responsible for all of southwest Virginia. We hear and decide cases revolving serious injuries to people at work, and we want to give them a fair and accessible courthouse to come to. We've heard items recently from litigants, such as they feel threatened, that it's sketchy, was one word that we used. I personally have been yelled at and heckled as I come into work there at the courthouse as well, and it's just created an environment where we've had people, we found sleeping outside, trash there on a regular basis that needs to be taken care of. And we want to turn to you and ask for your help. We have multiple pictures we can provide to council if you'd like to have those, if they'd be helpful to you, but we just are here tonight to ask for your help.
And if I may ask for a little bit of my own time, this is not just a problem at four twenty-five State Street. It is also throughout downtown. In my private capacity, I own the property at one forty-five and one forty-one Moore Street, just across from Bloom Restaurant, just down Winston's Alley from Union Forty-One, the brand-new restaurant, and I've had people sleeping on the sidewalk in front of my building. Someone has defecated against the outside wall of my building. And as council members said, we've got a lot of things. I've lived here all my life. State Street is more vibrant, more lively since any time in my memory, since nineteen-sixties, when everything was downtown. But this is, you know, a weight on the progress that is being made. And, you know, we're here on behalf of the commission. I'm here as a resident and property owner as well, but I've experienced everything Judge Wise has told you about, and we both work out of that office.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate you all coming tonight and for your immediate concerns. Of course, we're going to discuss ourselves and meet with the city manager to just try to find out what we can do, and I think this is part of a greater conversation. We have had some conversations, and I think we need to keep it going regarding, you know, specifically our downtown. You know, we obviously want people to feel safe downtown. We want our downtown to look clean. And obviously, too, with the opening of a casino in Bristol, we're going to have more visitors coming here, and we don't want anyone to come here and say, well, I went there once, and, you know, I had this experience downtown, and now I'm not going to come back. So obviously, this is something we need to seriously discuss more and continue our discussions to figure out a plan going forward.
Those types of comments that visitors say they like being here, but they're not coming back is not hypothetical. We have heard those comments. And on the other hand, we also have homeless people who live here, who have lived here for decades, who don't cause any problems, and the vagrants who've come in recently are threatening them, too. So it goes both ways. We've got problems on both sides, and we need to figure some solution. We just don't know exactly what that is yet.
I will note, for the record, the city did incapacitate the electrical outlets that were outside, and that was a drawing factor for them to charge their phones. Since that has happened, we've actually had people come upstairs to our security guard wanting to charge their phones in our office in the courtroom, and of course, we have sent them back out. But our security guard can't go down and take care of what we believe to be the city's property. So we just ask for your help. We'll be happy to meet with you at any time to share pictures. Feel free to reach out to us, and we'll be happy to.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you all. We had one more person sign up, late sign up for a non-agenda item, and that was Mr. Wyndham.
Thank you. My name is Lawrence Wyndham. I'm the pastor at St. Peter Presbyterian Church, Bristol, Virginia. We moved here twenty-five years ago from Orlando to start a church. We really love the area we live in. Just to comment on the gentleman that was up here before, I can't speak for the rescue mission in Bristol, Tennessee, but I do know that I stop regularly and ask people that are homeless if they would like to go to the rescue mission, where they can be taken care of, they can be helped a great deal. And I've come to find out that they do not want that kind of help. They actually, in some cases, they've been to the rescue mission and haven't done what they should do to stay at the rescue mission, and so that's, it's not like they're not offered help in our town, which is great. But I'm here to speak about the abortion thing. I don't, as a pastor and as a resident, I would ask you gentlemen to consider your position as being able to move this along to where there are no abortion clinics in the city. I wanted to just point out that every decision is a moral decision that we make, and considering the standard of why we make decisions and how we can make decisions. God has laid down a standard, whether people believe in Him or not, He has said, "You shall not kill." And so that's why we make the choices we make. We believe that He said this, it shouldn't happen, and on the end of the day, we're all either on the side of the angels or we have blood on our hands, right? If God is just a fairy tale, then no problem, no one's going to get in trouble. But if He's true and real, then it would be good to follow His standard on that. So thank you for all that you do, and thank you for this time.
Thank you. That's the last person that signed up for public comment for non-agenda items. So what we'll do is we'll move into item one of our regular agenda, which is the proclamation recognizing multiple sclerosis education and awareness month. Is there a staff report?
I can handle that one, former current mayor. MS is a chronic, often disabling, disease that attacks the central nervous system, which is made up of the brain, spinal cord, and optic nerves. The severity and symptoms of MS are unpredictable, vary from person to person. There's currently no cure for MS, but there are treatments that can help to control the condition and ease some symptoms. Research is ongoing to develop new and better ways to treat the disease with an attempt to achieve the goal of everyone living their lives free from the effects of MS. And here to accept the proclamation is Rhonda Martin. Mrs. Martin is the wife of a fellow Bristol city employee, so we're glad she's here. And we'll read the proclamation, so if you just want to stand there.
Sure. You'll handle the reading of it.
Whereas MS is a chronic, often disabling, disease that impacts more than four hundred thousand people in the United States, affecting twice as many women as men. And whereas MS can be mild or can cause individuals to lose their ability to write, speak, or walk. And whereas most individuals experience their first symptoms of MS between the ages of twenty and forty. And whereas the exact cause of MS is unknown and there is no cure, but there are treatments for initial attacks, medications, and therapies to improve symptoms, and recently developed drugs to slow the worsening of the disease. And whereas the MS Alliance of Virginia, MSAV, provides programs and services for anyone in Virginia whose life has been affected by MS. And whereas through education, assistance to support groups, special programs, and events in the dissemination of information, the MSAV provides a better-informed general population and the means to improve the quality of life for those in Virginia with MS. And whereas the MSAV is a one-hundred-percent voluntary organization formed to fill the needs of support groups and provide educational programs, activities, and events, and help others start upbeat groups in their communities. And whereas raising public awareness of MS will lead to increased support and services for families in our region impacted by this disease. Therefore, be it resolved that Neil Osborne, mayor, and the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, to hereby recognize the month of March two thousand twenty-three as multiple sclerosis education and awareness month. Reclaim this fourteenth day of March, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Lammy. And we'll actually get a motion and a second from the council to approve the proclamation.
I would like to make the motion that we approve the proclamation.
I second that. I don't know if we can speak on Neil's behalf. We can certainly approve the resolution.
So a motion and a second, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
We'll move on to our next item, item number two, which is a proclamation for Emergency Management Professionals Week, staff report.
Emergency Management Professionals Week is designated by the Virginia General Assembly, takes place March the nineteenth through March It takes place March the nineteenth through March twenty-third. This proclamation honors the service and commitment of emergency management professionals and recognizes their contributions to the lives, health and safety of all who live, visit and do business in the Commonwealth. Emergency management professionals provide the leadership, management and operational skills necessary to enable their communities, organizations and agencies to develop emergency plans and procedures, ensure personnel is adequately trained and exercise plans, provide emergency warnings, notifications and alerts, and acquire resources to protect the lives and property and enhance resiliency to emergency events.
Thank you, Mr. Lammy. Now we'll have a reading of this proclamation.
Proclamation, Emergency Management Professionals Week. Whereas the emergency management team of Bristol, Virginia and the Commonwealth of Virginia work tirelessly behind the scenes to create a safer, stronger and more resilient Bristol in the midst of natural disasters, pandemics, civil unrest, terrorism and other manmade and natural threats and hazards. And whereas every emergency begins and ends locally. And whereas emergency managers are considered vital public service to and between essential services that assist Bristol, Virginia to prepare for, respond to and recover from emergencies. And whereas emergency managers develop emergency plans and procedures, organize training, including first responders and community partners, manage, lead and provide skills and resources to minimize the impact of disasters, and work with state and federal agencies to find the most effective methods of disaster recovery to increase safety and security, as well as build business continuity. And whereas the role of emergency managers in creating a safer, more resilient community is now more important than ever. Now, therefore, the City Council of Bristol, Virginia does hereby proclaim March the nineteenth through the twenty-third of twenty twenty-three as Emergency Management Professionals Week in Bristol, and encourages all citizens to honor the Bristol, Virginia Emergency Management Team and to recognize their service behind the scenes and commitment to the health, safety and welfare of all who live and visit in Bristol, Virginia, adopted this fourteenth day of March twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Lammy. Now we're looking for a motion from the council.
I move to approve the proclamation.
Second.
A motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Okay. Before we move on to item number three, I think the others will be here shortly. We're going to actually take a short five-minute recess.
All right. Sorry we're late. We're going to go right into item three, which is presentation from non-mandated outside agencies. I believe the first person we're going to call up is Believe in Bristol.
Good evening. Happy Pi Day to everyone. Thank you all so much for having me here today. I'm Maggie Elliott, and I'm the Executive Director for Believe in Bristol. Always fun learning curve to get this guy going. I'm the first one to use it, right? I touched it.
We cut batteries from the budget.
All right, I can queue to you if you want. Okay, that sounds good. Believe in Bristol is an accredited program of Virginia Main Street, Tennessee Main Street and the National Main Street Center. For nearly two decades, we have worked in partnership with both cities of Bristol to sustain and develop downtown as a vital economic, cultural, recreational, residential and historic center for our community. Believe in Bristol's mission is to foster the collaborative, vibrant nature of both Bristol's by building a community of culture, lifestyle, heritage, music and economy. Believe in Bristol strives to strengthen the heart and soul of our historic downtown and facilitate its future growth. Bristol is one community whose heart is a vibrant downtown, where our unique cultural and historical heritage is celebrated, where a sustainable vigorous economy is enjoyed, and where the quality of life is enhanced by abundant opportunities for living, working, shopping and playing. I'm going to kick things off with a short video from Main Street America. I think they do a really great job of encompassing a top view down of what Main Street is.
Main streets are the heart of our communities. There are nations gathering places, places of shared memory, celebration and economic activity. Today's main streets are resilient. Through hard work, planning, commitment and action by local volunteers and leaders, main streets across America are thriving. Main Street America is a nationwide movement with a proven track record of revitalizing older and historic downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts. The Main Street America Network brings together thousands of passionate local leaders who contribute their time and ideas to building more vibrant and sustainable communities. Today, people are seeking out communities with character and places where they feel connected. Main Street America, downtowns and districts are places to raise families, start new businesses, build community and forge the future.
All righty, everyone pumped up for downtown now? Okay, awesome. No one in this room is new to the story of downtown Bristol's history. At one glance, downtown State Street, you can see the progress that has been made for decades. But I want to talk more about the strategy behind the success and the role that Believe in Bristol plays in it. I haven't actually talked about this piece of Main Street in a couple of years because but since there are so many new faces to counsel, I wanted to do an overview of what Main Street, what the Main Street approach is, which is what we follow with Believe in Bristol and why we're an accredited Main Street program, and obviously duly accredited. So the Main Street approach consists of four points that we've observed since our duly accredited Main Street program began in two thousand and six. And that covers obviously four committees under those four points. So organization involves creating a strong foundation for a sustainable revitalization effort, including cultivating partnerships, community involvement and resources for the district. That's why I'm here. So that's organization, check. Economic vitality focuses on capital, incentives and other economic and financial tools to assist new and existing businesses, catalyze property development and create a supportive environment for entrepreneurs and innovators that drive our local economies. Design supports a community's transformation by enhancing the physical and visual assets that set the commercial district apart. That's how your downtown looks. Is it inviting? Is it clean? Making sure that people can find their way with different wayfinding opportunities. And obviously, that's not just the fun part of things. That's also the nitty gritty part of things, going back to a public comment that was made, of course, about our homeless problem that that is highlighted within our downtown district that we are not turning a blind eye to. And then the last point is promotion. It positions the downtown or commercial district as the center of the community and hub of economic activity while creating a positive image that showcases a community's unique characteristics. We have plenty of those in downtown Bristol, plenty of postcard opportunities and unique assets that we have within our downtown and promoting those along with what we have to promote within our downtown businesses. National Main Street has also incorporated a new concept to their approach. These are called transformation strategies. Those transformation strategies are generated through meaningful community engagement and informed by an analysis of the district's market position. To put it lightly, these are unique to Bristol. We do not have the same transformation strategies as Abingdon, as Johnson City, as Asheville. These are unique to Bristol because we want to be Bristol. We do not want to be another downtown. These transformation strategies help us guide to revitalization program work. It's an easy way to say no. We get a lot of ideas to our organization, and this is a way for us to make sure that we are aligning them, that all of those suggestions align within our programming and initiatives for for the community. So an effective transformation strategy serves a particular customer segment, and it responds to an underserved market demand and creates a differentiated destination. As I said, we want to be Bristol. What this means is that all four of the Main Street points, as you'll see, coming from top to bottom, should be working together instead of being siloed into their own separate communities. So this makes sure that all of the Believe in Bristol teams under our umbrella are working together for one greater good. And then after market analysis and a visit from National Main Street a couple of years ago, we received two transformation strategies that we work towards today, and that's arts and entertainment and food experience. So Believe in Bristol specifically, what do you know us for? You know us from some of our regular community favorites, including Border Bash Summer Concert Series, The Star Spangled Fourth of July Celebration, State Street Trick or Treat, Small Business Saturday, Christmas Open House, Christmas Tree Lighting and Journeys End. But Believe in Bristol is way more than just events. We also assist and coordinate with our own, we also assist and coordinate our own merchant meetings. We guide property owners through historic preservation best practices and financial resources and cultivate creativity through the Arts and Entertainment District. We host loft tours, and one of our favorite events, we host the Entrepreneur Grant Competition, which in two thousand and twenty-two, we completed our seventh installment of, which was the biggest one yet. We received seventy-three applications. We interviewed thirty-two and accepted eighteen new and expanding businesses into our six-week training program. That program resulted in five businesses winning a total of eighty thousand dollars in grant money. This is all just to name a few of what is produced via one full-time employee and one part-time employee. And exciting news, as this, as of this week, we'll actually be welcoming a new part-time employee to our Believe in Bristol crew so that we can bring even more promotional activities to the Bristol community. We had some really big wins for two thousand and twenty-two calendar year thanks to additional support from both cities. Believe in Bristol partnered with the City of Bristol, Virginia and Discover Bristol on a Made in Bristol program to highlight and assist small-scale producers in the Bristol community. These small-scale producers or maker businesses are defined as all types of small businesses that are producing tangible goods. This includes businesses producing goods in textile, hardware, wood, metal, three D printing and food. It also includes hardware prototyping, consumer product design, breweries, distilleries and local food production and packaging. We have an array of small-scale producers, not just within downtown, but in the Bristol community. And with that grant program, we were able to not just help those downtown businesses, but also expand our reach. We are very grateful for that partnership and hope to be able to expand it even more. Believe in Bristol provided technical assistance for those small-scale producers. That was our role within the grant program. And those were obviously specifically to those small-scale producers who qualified under the Made in Bristol program. So in aligning this program with our Entrepreneur Grant Competition that I just mentioned, we are able to assist twenty-five businesses. Fourteen of those businesses were SWAM businesses, and we saw five new businesses open and eight full-time jobs created. We were also able to check a huge project off of our list last year, and that was installing a speaker system in downtown to play ambient music for visitors to the downtown district. The seventy thousand dollar project is the result of a collaboration between Believe in Bristol, Advanced Bristol Foundation and the Cities of Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia. The new system, which total honesty, is still currently undergoing some programming tweaks, exists to give the residents and guests a reminder of the city's musical legacy and plus its influence on the contemporary times. Not pictured, but an additional program to celebrate from two thousand and twenty-two was our Winter Wonderland Tree Display that surrounded our community Christmas trees across from Cumberland Square Park. Over thirty businesses and organizations decorated their adopted trees and added an additional level of festivities to the downtown footprint during the holiday season. We learned a lot and look forward to having an even bigger display for this year's Christmas events. Downtown Bristol has achieved economic revival in the past decade and a half by concentrating and investing in community assets in our downtown commercial corridor, with the goal of supporting the cluster of locally owned small businesses, fostering an accessible entrepreneurial ecosystem, improving the quality of life and promoting an inclusive sense of place that retains and attracts visitors and residents and visitors respectively. So this is a, this is a list of reasons why downtown is so important. I'm not going to read them at you, but I am going to hit the highlights. You do have these in front of you for review. These come from the National Trust for Historic Preservation, as well as the Downtown Bristol Development Strategy that was conducted in two thousand and nineteen. So downtown Bristol is where our earliest and most important history occurred. It's the cultural center of our community. Its buildings embody the community's past and its visual identity. Speaking of, downtown Bristol has the strongest identity and sense of place in our community. When people travel or shop, they want to see unique places, especially ones that offer a unique shopping experience. What more of an experience can you get than being in historic downtown Bristol, being in two places at once and experiencing what southern hospitality truly looks like? Downtown Bristol is critical to the local and regional economy. We'll get into that in just, in depth in just a little bit. It provides the greatest opportunity for fiscal efficiency. By reducing sprawl and concentrating retail in one area, downtown Bristol uses community resources wisely, such as infrastructure, tax dollars and land. We do a lot in a very small surface area. Downtown development, or sorry, development of downtown Bristol benefits the environment. That goes into that most, that previous point as well. Downtown Bristol is our postcard location, and most importantly, downtown Bristol is owned by everyone. Downtown commercial districts are prominent employment centers. Downtown Bristol is a great example of that with a hundred and sixty-five businesses, almost twelve hundred full-time employees, five hundred and forty-nine of those on the Virginia side of town, collectively making downtown Bristol, Virginia's second largest principal employer, only trailing Hard Rock by twenty full-time jobs. And that's according to the two thousand and twenty-two fiscal fiscal year audit from the city. Downtown Bristol is a positive reflection of community image, pride, prosperity and the level of investment. Critical factors in business retention and recruitment efforts of industrial and professional businesses and commercial developers. Sorry, we have some formatting issues, but you do have it in front of you at least that doesn't have the formatting issues. That's not Jean's fault. The Main Street District represents a significant portion of the community's tax base. I'm sorry, I think I queued you too soon, but it doesn't matter. If the district declines, there, sorry, I got ahead of myself. If the district declines, property values drop, placing more of a burden, more of a tax burden on other parts of town. That's why we say repeatedly that downtown Bristol is the heartbeat of the community. That's not just Bristol, that's that's communities all over the nation. There has to be a heartbeat somewhere, and now that downtown has, downtowns have the support that it does. Those tend to be the heartbeat, those are the heartbeat and tend to be the place that we come to gather and celebrate. So you'll see that real estate assessment just for the Virginia side of downtown is almost twenty point five million dollars. Over four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars was collected in restaurant food tax by the City of Bristol in the two thousand and twenty-two calendar year. Lodging tax was just within downtown, brought in over five hundred thousand. And admission tax collected by the city was over fifty thousand last year. All of those numbers raised over the last calendar year. All in all, I think it's sufficient to say we cannot take away investments or lose focus on what's bringing substantial return on investment and known financial generator for our cities. The commercial district also represents a huge public and private investment. Since two thousand and six, we've seen over eighteen million dollars in public investment and over fifty-six million in private. In two thousand and twenty-two, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in public investment from Bristol, Virginia was leveraged against one point two million dollars in private investment on the Virginia side of downtown. That's a lot of money being poured into one location. People care about downtown that much to not only put their dreams, but their assets into downtown Bristol. Status quo is not an option. We cannot take away investments or lose focus on what's continued to bring a return to our community. And downtown Bristol is a known financial generator for our cities. Because Believe in Bristol is known for producing quality programs and special events, we're reliable and fiscally responsible, we do a lot with very little. And naturally, because downtown is the community space in which we gather, we became, we become that go-to resource for the cities to come when that planning or legwork is needed to grow. We take those additional responsibilities on with community pride as we rally our volunteers. Our organization alone has brought in a value of almost one point four million dollars to the community just in volunteer hours. As expectations rise from both cities, so does the cost of sustainability. Believe in Bristol is grateful for the funding allocation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, and we ask the same confidence in our organization for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. One year of sufficient funding is not enough for our organization to be able to move the needle. You can see how, oops, sorry, I'm out of order. Downtown Bristol is still recovering from the economic impacts of the global pandemic. In turn, Believe in Bristol has identified four key strategic. In turn, Believe in Bristol has identified four key strategic goals for our organization. The first is to foster a thriving and diverse storefront economy that supports downtown Bristol's business community, excites visitors, and meets the needs of those residents. We cultivate a lively and engaging downtown atmosphere and identify downtown Bristol as a destination for locals and tourists alike, create a truly welcoming environment that enhances the experience of downtown Bristol's visitors and residents, and increase Believe in Bristol's organizational effectiveness and ability to deliver on its mission now and in the future. And we plan to execute those strategies with a few special areas of focus for 2023. First and foremost, public art projects and creative placemaking. I know I'm probably, I'm way over on my time, so I'm going to go through these fast. We have a workbook that we are applying for several grants currently for public art projects and creative placemaking. That means more murals in downtown and other special art projects. We have several, several local art, art organization partners, say that five times fast, who are helping us with this program. We see this as a five-year program, starting with this year and being able to execute at least one mural, what we're really excited about. A downtown gift card program, it is a proven strategy that creating your own local currency is a economic, a significant economic generator for downtown space. Development of a coworking space downtown, I have said this previously and will continue to because we get closer and closer and closer, and then we take five steps back, and then we get closer and closer and closer again, to be able, being able to open doors for a coworking space in downtown. By the time I stand in front of you next year, that will not be on the what's next, it'll be of what we did. Monthly merchant meetups and business training, we of course had to do, have big pause on this during COVID because we weren't able to gather, but now that we're able to bring our merchants back together and also invite new merchants to downtown, as we discussed, there are several new businesses that are consistently opening within our downtown district, and seeing what the good, the bad, and the ugly is. Of course, the homeless problem is a huge issue that has come up in conversations several times and being a part of that solution instead of adding to the clutter of it all, I guess. Community events, those familiar favorites and new, we've got two new concert series in addition to the Border Bash Summer Concert Series that we're excited to be able to welcome back. And then the Christmas season is getting a bit brighter. We have a lot of ideas under our sleeve and working on gathering our partners currently to be able to grow, of course, our Winter Wonderland Christmas Display, but also bring some more lights and fun to the downtown district for Christmas season. And then Bristol Pepper Fest and Restaurant Week are just examples of some more transformational strategy-focused special events that we have on our radar for this coming year. Okay? Our organization must receive adequate support from the City of Bristol, Virginia to survive. We're working every day towards getting our organization to a more sustainable state and to not be reliant on our city's financial support. We understand the financial burdens the city has faced in the past, and of course, challenges in the future, and Believe in Bristol has taken previous budget cuts with grace as we pulled up our bootstraps and got to work. But we've seen cracks beginning to show, and we do not want our downtown community to suffer in return. That says history of giving public and private partnership at the top. So here you can see how our organization has adapted in the recovery period post-COVID. Given the circumstances, we have diversified our funding streams, including increasing our fundraising and special project efforts as to be less reliant on direct public support. And then fiscal year 2022, you'll see that is in the blue, has, was a great year for grant funds, but I'll bet I will, I do want to note it is a skewed representation due to recovery and COVID funds on what is normally available to our organization. So that's why that number is, that percentage is so significant, but we are grateful for And then that's a breakdown of how we plan to spend the fifty thousand dollars. Okay? I kind of already covered that, so since I know I'm way over, I'm just gonna wrap up quickly. The momentum of downtown Bristol is not stopping anytime, anytime soon. We have to invest in what is working in Bristol and downtown Bristol is working. People are moving here because they're falling in love with downtown. We cannot lose that momentum. Bristol has many things to look forward to, including the upcoming growth of the Hard Rock Casino and Resort, and increased likelihood of passenger rail, and we must not forget what made Bristol a viable option to be considered for those investments. All right, so to wrap, in summary, a few key takeaways, Believe in Bristol, sorry, go back. We've helped increase the tax base, we've partnered to create and increase tourism, we've increased property values, we've increased the number of jobs, provided and encouraged positive perception of downtown and the community, improved relations with local government and the private sector, and we've increased the volunteer base for the city, for our cities. We have created a business-friendly environment in downtown Bristol, and we produce quality programs and special events for downtown businesses and locals. In short, we get things done. All right, so lastly, I'm going to leave you with, with a message from the Walker Collaborative when they did the Downtown Bristol Development Study. In addition to the need of Believe in Bristol to support downtown, the community needs to support Believe in Bristol. It is critical that Believe in Bristol focus most of its attention on proactive measures to enhance downtown as opposed to the time-consuming distractions of raising all of its own funds. And I thank you for your time. I'll welcome any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. I'll go ahead and open it up to any questions or comments we might have.
I'll go first. Thank you, Ms. Elliott, for being here. We appreciate the work you and your growing team are doing. I've had the privilege to work on State Street for the last eleven or so years, and I've definitely seen the good work that you do down there, so thank you. I do just want to say I appreciate how much you put into our community and looking forward to working with you going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this presentation. And I know that you work hard, but now seeing all of this up here and just reminders of all the things that you do all year long, thank you. I know that it takes a lot of time to just do one event, so you've got many events, many things up there. A couple of things I wanted to point out, the Entrepreneur Grant Competitions are huge. I think for what you've done with those and watched that program grow over the years, it's brought in more entrepreneurs to our downtown, it's got people, it's starting making their wheels turn on what can I do, what kind of business can I start? And I think you have really helped spark that for downtown. And I do have one question about that. I know that in the past, DHCD has offered the, let's see, which one is it?
Community Business Launch.
Community Business Launch. Are they still doing that?
They are, and that was, so with the Community Business Launch for this current, no, last fiscal year, sorry. We paired that resurgence grant that we partnered with the City of Bristol, Virginia, and Discover Bristol on that we did the Made in Bristol program. We actually used the Community Business Launch Grant as a match, as a cash match for that resurgence grant. So we did end up receiving the highest amount allotted for the resurgence grant, and we, we attribute that to the fact that we did have all the partnerships on that grant. There were several other communities who were battling against each other when it came to grant applications, and that definitely strengthened our grant application. I'm sure Christopher will talk about their role as well, which was an amazing partnership, and we're really grateful for it. And then it obviously allowed us to be able to grow the Entrepreneur Grant Competition and leverage that Community Business Launch, Launch Funds. But yes, they offer it every year, so.
Okay, that's wonderful. I look forward every year to seeing your numbers on that, and then also how you put it with doing also the Made in Bristol program and doing those entrepreneur challenges or entrepreneur workshops. I think that's key. We don't find a lot of those workshops offered, so if someone's saying, how do I start a business, or what do I need to do, and where you provide that program and walk them through those steps is huge. So thank you so much for what you do there. And then the last thing I'll say is, I love the Christmas Tree Event. It's fantastic, and I look for that to grow each year, and can't wait for this year to see how that goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to your note on the Entrepreneur Grant numbers, those numbers don't mean anything if a business opens their door and closes within a year or three years. So that's the reason that we provide those trainings and workshops prior to offering grant opportunities, because we want to make sure that we are giving them as many resources as possible to survive and succeed as possible. So I look forward to bringing those numbers to you every year.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, you know, like the Vice Mayor said, the Christmas Tree setup that y'all did last year was fantastic, it looked really good, and I expect it'll be even bigger next year, I'm sure that's your goal. And I just want to highlight some of the other cool events, you know, like the Pepper Festival, and as someone who doesn't even like spicy food, it's, it's, it's exciting and dangerous at the same time. But you just had a very successful adult prom.
We did.
That, I guess, I went, I guess it was about two hundred and fifty or three hundred people there, so.
Yes. Yeah, that's our biggest fundraiser of the year.
It was very successful, I thought, and a great job, and.
Thank you.
You know, we look forward to, look forward to everything that you all do throughout the year, so I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got two questions. One thing that I get asked a lot, well, two, both of these things are things I get asked a lot. One is, are you planning for July Fourth fireworks in 2023?
Okay, so we are, we are trying. The availability of fireworks has gotten smaller and smaller since COVID. There were several fireworks organizations, companies that folded, and so there was one company in particular that bought those book of business and those books of business, and, but they only have so many technicians, and so the availability is, is not what it used to be. So we are trying. The cost has also gone up significantly. It is twenty-five thousand dollars for fifteen minutes, which for reference, I have my current part-time employee, she gets paid less than that in a calendar year. So it is, that's a very, we would love to, and we are trying. That's the, that's the short answer.
Okay. The other question is, you talked about the downtown speaker system.
Yes.
What was the source of the funding for that? You said it's about, what, seventy thousand?
Yeah, so there was twenty-five thousand raised by Believe in Bristol. The Advanced Bristol Foundation matched that twenty-five thousand. The City of Bristol, Virginia gave five, and the City of Bristol, Tennessee gave five. And then there was additional grant to cover that, that remaining ten.
Thank you.
Yes. Perfect example of public and private partnership in action. Any song requests you can send to me on the side.
All right, very good. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next person we are going to hear from is Ms. Ross with The Birthplace of Country Music.
It doesn't like me, normally. Forward and backwards, okay. I want to thank you all for letting me come tonight and talk to you about The Birthplace of Country Music. I really appreciate it. Forward, oh, got it. The Birthplace of Country Music tonight is respectfully requesting fifty thousand dollars in funding from the City of Bristol, Virginia for fiscal year 2024. I want to go and give you an overview of our mission and how we accomplish all that we do. The Birthplace of Country Music seeks to perpetuate, promote, and celebrate Bristol's rich musical heritage, to educate and engage audiences worldwide regarding the history, impact, and legacy of the nineteen twenty-seven Bristol sessions, and to create recognition, opportunities, and economic benefit for our local and regional communities. And I believe that when I go through my, my slides tonight, you'll see how we do that. As you know, we have three branches. We have the Radio Bristol, Birthplace of Country Music Museum, and Bristol Rhythm and Roots Reunion. First of all, I want to talk about Radio Bristol. We've been, when we opened our museum in 2014, we were supposed to have wax museum, wax people in this area, and we said, we can't do that, so we're going to bring back the radio station. So we put a real radio station in there, and we broadcast twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and we're worldwide on the web. We have listeners in all fifty states, a hundred and forty countries, and we have an eighteen million-person footprint on our Farm and Fun Time on PBS stations. One thing that I will say about that, we're on Blue Bridge PBS, we're in all of Charlotte, I mean, not of all, all of North Carolina, their PBS covers the whole state, we're on East Tennessee PBS, we're in preliminary talks with PBS in Nashville, we're also working on going to Diddy TV, we're working with them out of Memphis, who have a paid prescription, and they go around the globe, they have listeners in Australia, et cetera. So we feel like that footprint is really going to get larger, I will tell you. In one of our Farm and Fun Time, someone from Australia heard that this artist, these artists were going to be here, and they were following them, and they came to a Farm and Fun Time show, they flew over just for that. One of the things that Radio Bristol is going to do with Farm and Fun Time this year, they are, they have been invited by the Bluegrass Hall of Fame to perform at the Romp Festival, which is very exciting for us to get that footprint. Bristol Rhythm and Roots Reunion, as you know, that's our premier event that we put on. We were very excited this past year with all the media outlets that were covering the festival and the ones that we brought in. If you look at all that we got and we look at their demographics, et cetera, we reached a hundred and seventy million people sold that, our audience. We had thirty-two thousand, estimated thirty-two thousand people in attendance, which is, was an increase of five thousand from 2021. If our ticket sales to date are our weekend ticket sales, because that's all that's on sale, is any indication of what we can expect for 2023, we're at seventy percent of what we sold last year for we can pass us when we open the gates, and we've only announced ten artists. We'll announce the rest of our artists at the end of the month. We have had over thirteen million festival media impressions last year. We had like one point five million in advertising equivalency of combined media coverage with all that we brought to town. If you'll look there, there's are some of our notable ones. The, we, back in 2015, we did an economic impact study, and we had planned to do that right before COVID hit, and we felt like we need to get back to a more, what we're going to do from here on out, I guess. So, but back in then, it was sixteen point one million. I think that would be a whole lot more than that now. One of the things that we're doing to promote our festival this year is going to two festivals and setting up booths to get people to come here because their audience is a lot like us, and that is Merle Fest, it's in Wilkes-Barre, North Carolina, and the Romp Festival in Owensburg, If we look at our museum, it's really doing well, we're excited. We've had an increase since of tour groups from 2021 of thirty-five. So that's, that's encouraging for us because tour buses rarely went down to nothing during COVID. We have had an increase in attendance at our museums. We've have done, we did forty-six student tours last year, and we reached over twenty-three thousand students. We've had visitors in our museum this past year from twenty-two hundred and fifty cities, because we record all that, fifty states and four countries. One of the things that we're excited about the museum is we are, if y'all know, we're working on the building in between the museum and the hotel, the Joe and Cindy Gregory Building that was donated to us, and we've gotten funding, we're working on historic and new market tax credits, exploring them right now, and our goal is to hopefully complete the renovations and install the exhibits within the next two years and make that block of the country music play complete, because we changed that name. Let's talk about the justification for funding. This is our vision for the future. We think we've been a proven contributor to the city's overall well-being and vision of the future. BCM actively contributes to all seven of the city's strategic focus areas, and when we went through our proposal to submit for funding, we really tried to tie all that to You know, we think we, we have created, and Bristol is an economic hub, because employers want to locate in an area that's thriving and growing, and if you look at our downtown from even what it was five years ago, there's hardly any building that isn't occupied. It's pretty exciting. And employers want to locate in an area where their employees can enjoy their free time. And I used to, when I'd leave work and Christina was at Believe in Bristol, because we were just seeing it take off, and I'd go, I'd call her if I was leaving late at night, and I went, Christina, there's people everywhere, and it's happening all the time now, ain't it? So, yeah. So Bristol is a destination. We bring visitors from around the country and the world. We do attend major motor coach conferences each year to promote Bristol to travel groups. We were able to work with Explore Bristol, I guess it's been a month or two ago, we went to the- went to the American Bus Association Conference in Detroit, Michigan. It was cold. But one of the things that was exciting for us, we were able, through funding from Explore Bristol, to have our own booth. During that bus, we had fifty-four appointments in one day, and our plans for the rest of the year, we're going to the Tennessee and Virginia Motor Coach Conferences this year, and then this SCMA and AMA, that is our South Central Motor Coach, and it covers Arkansas, Louisiana, Missouri, and Texas. And so we're also going to be attending the Southeast USA Spotlight. So we think we'll see a great, I know that the week that we got back from Detroit, we had four people call us wanting to check out. One of the things that we've added to our tours this year is we try to give them other things and just to visit the museum. We can cater lunches in for them, but if you all know Clint Holly with the Ernest Tube, one of the add-ons for people, and they have to pay for that, he is going to have an artist in if someone chooses that add-on, and that he, they will show, they will, they will see him recording that music to a record, and then one of the people there will get to take home the record, and the others will have a download. And Tracy was telling me last week, they already had one that added that on, so that's pretty exciting for us. We think we are a foundation for the future. We do school tours and visits, we do special student projects, we do summer camps. Last year, we brought our summer camps back since COVID, and it was huge success. We work with teachers to develop lesson plans on both sides of the line that tie back to their standards of learning. We also do adult education, teacher and service training, and if you can see, all the other things that we're doing. We do have free family days. One of the things that we're pretty proud of right now is we worked with the Smithsonian, they have an EBT program through the Smithsonian, and if a person comes to our museum that has an EBT program card, they can show that, and they can get admission for three dollars to our museum. And we've seen lots and lots of people using that in our community, which really made us feel glad they were, or happy that we were doing that, because it is reaching an audience that we might not have been getting. You know, museums and all that we do, we think that community pride leads to pro-social behavior, and if you can see, that's some of our volunteers for the festival and creates vibrant neighborhoods. That's our green team that helps recycle everything. During our festival, we will have about eight hundred volunteers for the weekend, and then we couldn't do without them. And we also have volunteers, most of our programming in our radio is done by volunteer DJs, and in our museum, we have volunteers also. We've got one right here, Paul Conco, he's one of our great volunteers. One of your all things was a healthy financial environment. We think we directly support that with the sales tax revenue through admissions, concert tickets, and all that we do. We think our tourism drives hotel occupancy and sales for downtown businesses. I know during our festival weekend, they are, all the hotels in our area are full, and it looks like this year, we're going to have to sort of expand our horizons for where we put artists, because we're getting less and less of our local hotels, because they can sell them to the people coming in, but that's great news. We think we generate millions of dollars of economic impact from non-regional visitors. This is one of the, one of the, during our festival, we hear all the time that they don't have enough employees or they can't do this, but if you look Karen Hester, she says they normally add eight to twelve employees to handle their volume, and it's our biggest sales weekend of the entire year. We hear from, especially from our restaurants downtown, that it's what keeps them going through the cold winter months of festival days. Superb facilities, infrastructure, we think the adjacent hotel and the museum is a great example of that, and when we get that one building in between, it'll even be even more beautiful on that block. As you can see, there's the Sessions Hotel. We think that we're doing the building blocks, our building blocks to financial sustainability. We have several, one of them is our individual for the museum is our nineteen twenty-seven society, that's our individual people that give to us. We have the Unbroken Circle Society, which is a cumulative giving, and the Legacy Society is also individual giving. Block two is our Leadership Circle, and that's businesses that contribute to our museum. We have a vibrant Grants Task Force. Our, our grants from when we started that to where we are now is just, I mean, it's really helped us along the way. We also have a Bristol Session Super Raffle. If you've not bought a ticket, you can buy one soon. But that's one of, we will raise about two hundred and fifty thousand with that each year. It's been a great fundraiser for us. It's probably the biggest single fundraiser that we do for the museum. And our government support on all levels, whether it be state, local, or regional, we get that support. And then our sponsorship of support for the programming that we do, not just for the festival, but for what we do for Farm and Fun Time and what we do for other programming that we have in the museum. Our projected outcomes of all that we do is the continuation of BCM's proven positive impact on the City of Bristol, Virginia, and I thank for you for your time tonight and for your support over the years.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ross. Go ahead and open it up to questions or comments.
Well, go ahead and start. Thank you so much for that, Leah, and thank you for, for, I see Paula here too, but thank you all for all your hard work. I don't think, sometimes when you have a jewel like the Birthplace of Country Music Museum in your own city, you don't realize what you've got. And so, working with other localities throughout the state, everybody would love to have a museum like that and be the birthplace of country music, and we truly have a jewel. And a comment that you said back on the justification for funding, that BCM is a proven contributor to the city's overall well-being and vision for the future, I believe that. For what you all bring to our city, you are a bright light, so thank you, thank you for all your hard work. I know the festival is is a super huge undertaking, and people don't realize also the economic impact that that brings from our downtown businesses, but also all of our hotels, our restaurants. And so, I was trying to think what else I was going to say to that, but I want to say we appreciate all that you all do. Thank you.
And I'd like to add on to that. Thank you, Ms. Ross, for being here. We appreciate that. We appreciate what you and your team does at the, at the Birthplace Country Music Museum, radio station, festival, all the, the many things that you all do for our community. I'm very biased, my wife worked there for seven years. I know the hard work that you all do behind the scenes, I know the effort you put into things, I know the care that you all have for the legacy that you're, you're fighting for here, so thank you for what you do, we appreciate it.
I appreciate that. You know, I think, you know, I feel like that, I know most people in the community, but we have a wonderful staff, and they work very hard, and it's because of the way they love the organization for which they're working.
I do have one question I forgot to ask you.
I hope I have the answer.
I wrote it down, too. I wrote it down, sorry. On the, you mentioned talking about the school tours, and I would imagine our Bristol schools come in, is it mainly Bristol-centric, or do you draw from other school systems?
No, I mean, we draw from as far away as, we have tour groups that come from Pennington Gap School Groups. So we, from all of northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia. One of the things that we're kind of proud of, we did get a grant to do work with Virginia Middle School, and it, I forget what it's called, but we have an after-school program for two years with children who might not otherwise be able to be exposed to the music and do all the things that they do. So I think we're starting into our second year of that grant.
That's fantastic. Is it like a songwriting school, or?
Well, I think they do a lot of different things. They come to the museum, but I think they do a lot, they do songwriting, they, they learn about instrument, they learn about the history of music and where you went from an eight-track to.
Down just your phone, almost.
They're like, what's that? Yeah.
You know, my love of country music is well documented, especially old country music. So I really appreciate everything that you all do, and you know, I have a passion for the museum, I have a passion for Rhythm and Roots, I think it's fantastic. But I do want to thank you, I know you mentioned the, you had fifty-eight group tours this year, which was an enormous jump from the previous year.
Well, you know, the buses, they've just about shut down, but people are ready to get back out there. There was a lot of great interest at the ABA conference that we went to.
I know, you'd mentioned that was in Detroit, you went up there. I mean, I think that the importance of those type of group events, you know, bus parties, it cannot be, you cannot overstate how important those are, you know, to, to the economy of a, of a town or a city. You know, because, and I think you may have said it, or if not, I thought it while you were saying it, you know, they're not just coming just to see the museum. They're coming here, they're going to restaurants, they're going to shops, they're going to the museum, they're doing fifteen different things while they're here, and it injects a lot of money into the local economy. So, you know, those cannot be, you cannot overstate how important those are, so I appreciate the work you all are doing to bring those here.
We had a lady coming in, it's been about a month or so ago, that used to live in Bristol and had been away for over ten years, and she came in, and I happened to be in the museum, and she went, I cannot believe how much our downtown has changed since I've been gone. I mean, and it's, you know, I think we play a part in it, but I think everyone that loves Bristol, whether it's a business or an event that we're doing, et cetera, all contribute to that.
You know, I think that the first time I ever went to the Birthplace of Country Music Museum was when it was in a storefront at the mall, and you know, they had, you basically three displays, because there were three open corners. And, and I think the first Rhythm and Roots I went to, I saw little Jimmy Dickens, and nobody was taking tickets, you just walked into the park and there he was. So, you know, it's, it's come, it's come a long way, and, you know, we appreciate everything you do, and we appreciate your presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, I do, if you, there's a sock on your, at your, I bet you're wondering what that is. So when we went to ABA, we always try to get a catch, so people remember us, because you have fifty-four appointments in one day, it's, you've got five minutes to talk to them and a minute to get to your next. So we took these socks, and when we were through and had to go to the next, we put this out, and we said, we brought you a pair of socks today because we want to get our foot in the door, and once we've got our foot in the door and you come visit us, we know we're going to knock them off of you.
That is, that is fantastic.
That's Tracy Childress, that's, I'm not creative like that. Tracy Childress came up with that. Thank you.
Find me on Rhythm and Roots Weekend, I guarantee you'll be wearing these.
We're going to take a picture.
Please. All right, our next presentation is from Mr. Perrin with Discover Bristol.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne, and members of council. My name is Christopher Perrin, and I'm the Director of Discover Bristol. Thanks for the time to present during tonight's budget workshop. The presentation you received has more slides than we'll cover tonight. If you have questions, please reach out, and I'll be happy to discuss any of it with you. Here's a quick reminder of Discover Bristol's mission statement. A DMO promotes a community as an attractive travel destination and enhances its public image as a dynamic place to live, work, and play. Partnerships are critical for the overall success of Discover Bristol. Several partners wrote letters of support on our behalf, and you can find those in your packet. It's important to understand that our role is to serve as the hub of Bristol's tourism industry and promote all aspects of what the city has to offer. Tourist spending helped lessen the tax burden of Bristol, Virginia residents by nine hundred and twenty dollars, and that number was six hundred and fifty-three dollars the previous year. Tourism generated over eighty million dollars for Bristol, Virginia's economy, creating over seven hundred and eighty-four jobs, and that information comes from the Virginia Tourism Corporation and Tourism Economics. This shows how the, the impact and the power of tourism is a cyclical feature here, and how the money comes in and gets reinvested back throughout the community. This is a reminder of why you don't see our ads. Discover Bristol promotes our city to these markets to generate two to three-night stays in our city in the hotels. These are a couple of our target audience personas, gives you a good idea of who we're going after, and a lot of those make sense to just the general population. This is a brief snapshot of our owned marketing channels. This is a, an area that we're able to leverage, what we've been able to bring in ourselves, whether it's website visitation, social media channels, and visitor guides and maps. So what does success look like? Having metrics to determine success is essential, with lodging tax collections being our primary target. Here's a visual chart of Bristol, Virginia's lodging tax collections. Last year, the city saw a five hundred and thirty thousand dollar or forty-one percent increase compared to the previous year, and this all happened before the temporary casino opened its doors. I've even heard that there's projections for the lodging tax collections to be over two million dollars during this fiscal year. So I'm going to provide a review of Bristol, Discover Bristol's influence last year and point out tangible examples of our impactful work. The Many Takes the States event, we successfully recruited to come to Bristol, which led to approximately twelve hundred attendees visiting and staying overnight on a Wednesday, the middle of the week, when hotels are not nearly as busy. Discover Bristol created several new events in 2022 with the goal of appealing to multiple target audiences. This was the Vancouver International Mountain Film Festival, and we brought that to the Cameo Theater in March of last year. It celebrated the outdoors and exposed an audience from four metro markets in three states to one of our important asset partners. We brought two new food events to Bristol in 2022, and their success shows an appetite for these activities. The Discover Bristol Wing Walk and the Bristol Oktoberfest Event both sold out before the event dates. Residents and visitors enjoyed these inaugural events, with some participants coming from over five hours away. These events welcomed visitors from six states and eight metro markets. Website traffic is another performance indicator for us, and 2022 was a record year. DiscoverBristol.org had more visitors in 2022 than 2020 and 2021 combined. A sizable amount of traffic was generated by our digital ad campaigns, and these ads were placed in front of our target audience in key markets over thirteen million times. It was the best performing ad campaign for the agency that we worked with for all of We also launched a mobile app last year, which serves as another resource for our visitors. The Made in Bristol campaign that Maggie touched on earlier was a great collaborative effort between Discover Bristol, the City of Bristol, Virginia, and Believe in Bristol. From a PR and co-op perspective, we were able to get a Bristol article in Small Market Meetings, Town Magazine, and South Park Magazine. These stories and ad placements provided free publicity in key markets, and it was a wonderful opportunity for us to showcase several attractions and venues, as you can see throughout these editorial pieces. The Business View Magazine was another piece that we had that worked in conjunction with a City of Bristol, Virginia feature article, and Food and Travel Magazine was another advertorial piece that we were able to showcase several restaurants, businesses, and attractions as a way to showcase what Bristol has to offer. 2022 was an award-winning year for Discover Bristol and the City of Bristol. Discover Bristol earned four awards and successfully nominated three partners in the Southwest Virginia Tourism Awards. Bristol was also named a 2022 Top Adventure Town by Blue Ridge Outdoors Magazine. Visitor guide requests are another important metric for us, and we saw significant growth in request compared to 2021, and you can see where our top states are that are requesting visitor guides, which is a huge intent. If people are interested in coming to visit a city, they're going to request a visitor guide to learn more about all there is to do in the city. We recently released our new visitor guide and have distribution partners to get this promotional piece in front of a lot of eyeballs in important areas. I'm going to briefly touch high level on some of our paid marketing and promotional tactics and strategies for the fiscal year. This slide that you see provides some of those top-level paid marketing and promotion tactics that are being utilized by Bristol, Discover Bristol, and also some things that we would like to achieve. You have several additional slides in your packet that provide more of the detailed information. So why invest in Bristol's tourism economy? So, why invest in Bristol's tourism economy? First and foremost, there's a legal obligation to fund tourism since there is a lodging tax ordinance in Bristol, Virginia. Bristol's hospitality and tourism industry, which is the number-one employment sector for the city, is growing, which shows the overall strength of our product. With an increase in tourism businesses, they need help in bringing visitors to their cash registers. Funding Discover Bristol isn't an expense, it's an investment. I just want to briefly show you one more time the steep and steady incline that we're seeing from a lodging tax collections. Tourism is an economic driver for the city. You're able to collect over half a million dollars more this past year than previous years. And I just want to touch one more time on this slide here, because tourism is saving the residents of Bristol, Virginia nine hundred and twenty dollars in tax relief, and tourism contributed eighty million dollars to Bristol, Virginia's economy. Tourism generates seven hundred and eighty-four jobs in Bristol, Virginia. Tourism is a vital part of Bristol's economy, and it needs to be supported appropriately. I just want to say thank you for your continued partnership and trust you put into Discover Bristol to provide the required service of tourism development and promotion for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open it up to questions and comments.
Thank you for your presentation, Christopher, and thank you for all your hard work. I will tell you that I went to the Oktoberfest event that was sold out, and it was so much fun. I know that was a lot of hard work, and I appreciate that. I'm just curious, on the, on the page with the traditional advertising tactics, with all the magazines there, are those magazines that you are investing in, that you, I mean, that you are paying for advertising in?
Some of those are. It, it, some of it's going to come down to what our, our budget looks like from a funding perspective. Some of those we've written into grant proposals, and there's others that we've had a history in advertising in. I know there's some of the BTC co-op programs that are in there. Those are some of the areas that we do look at, but there's also some of those publications that we would like to get into if budget allows.
Okay.
I'll, I'll jump in here. Thank you for being here, Mr. Perrin. We appreciate what you do at Discover Bristol. I do definitely want to highlight the Mini Takes the States event. That was probably one of the top-ten coolest things, driving my Mini Cooper around the racetrack. Never in my life did I ever think that would happen, so I thank you for giving me personally that opportunity.
Sure.
But thank you for the event you put on, the work you do behind these, and these are some great assets to our community, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
So, one thing that was highlighted in the BCM presentation that I thought was very, very effective is bus tour sales. So, are you, are you going to these same trade shows and events to, to get tour buses? And how is that turning out for you?
We are currently not. When I came onboard, it was part of the pandemic, a lot of group travel had shut down. I feel like that's a conversation piece that would make sense for us to figure out some of the trade shows that they are going to, to where we're not overlapping or duplicating efforts, knowing that budgets are tight, that we are being very smart and efficient with those spins. It's certainly something that we are aspiring to get into as far as group travel, but I also feel like there's responsible ways that we can work at it together to where we can maybe get exposure at twice the amount of events instead of going to the exact same events.
Okay. So, in the funding request packet for strategic goals for funding request 2024, one, one thing that you highlight is ad impressions, website page views. These are, these are not things, obviously, ads that we should ever see, because we're not targeted to visit where we live.
Sure.
Could we, could we ever get copies of those ads so we could, could see them?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, maybe, you know, where they're running, you know, what, you know, what the budget is that you're running with on them. Another question I had for you, in the presentation, you had talked about the new brochures. I recently went to Newport News and back, so I stopped at a couple of, you know, rest stops. I didn't see any of the brochures. Do you, do you have any?
We, I, I can, I can certainly bring you some of those. We just had new ones that came out probably the last two weeks. They're starting to get into circulation. Like I said, we have some distribution partners that are getting out there, including Virginia Tourism. We are also looking at having modified versions, because paper is expensive these days, to figure out ways by utilizing technology like QR codes to where they can scan and go to our website and learn even more information. But we are, have applied for getting the, the visitor guides into safety and rest areas for the I-81 and I-77 corridor, which has an annual traffic count of about nine-point-two million people. So, that's an area that we are excited to be able to get into. And you can see in the presentation, I think that we have five hundred and thirty-six businesses across four or five states that our visitor guides are in right now. We also get several other bulk requests from other rest stops, chambers of commerce, triple-A travel centers, and a lot of individual requests as well. So, the visitor guide is a critical component of our overall marketing and promotional strategy, and we're already looking at other ways for us to maybe get into some other areas or markets that we previously haven't been.
And that, that's kind of what surprised me, you know, because, you know, it's, it's like, it, it's very, you know, high visibility, but it's, it's, it's basically the most passive form of advertising. It's just there when you stop to go to the bathroom, basically, you know? I was like, well, why aren't these here? I hear, I'm finding, you know, brochures for every other town in Virginia. Why can't I find Bristol? So, yeah, that was interesting. But yeah, I would really like to see, you know, see those. If you have those printed, that'd be good.
Absolutely.
And I want to add to that, too. So, you are currently also doing print distribution services and doing all of their lines as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will hear presentation of school board budget.
That's one way to clear a room, just call me to the mic. Yeah, it, it is, it's been a long night already. It looks like you have a lot on your agenda. The good news is, I think I can wrap my presentation up in about an hour and a half. So, seriously, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Aides, thank you, first of all, for your support of public education for this school year. But obviously, the purpose of my visit tonight is to make a budget present, or make a budget request for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And so, I'll go ahead and get started, maybe, just like everybody else, kind of start out with our vision and our mission. You know, we try to align our entire budget, all of our goals, everything that we do, to this, this one vision statement, which is to prepare every student, regardless of their background or their, the ability they come to us with, for them to be able to thrive in the dynamically changing world that we're going to send them out to after high school. And so, we take that responsibility very seriously, and we appreciate the support that you provide to make sure that we're able to make that happen. As I said, we do try to align our budget priorities with, with that vision and with our goals. I'll just go through these very quickly. As you know, as we open a brand-new school in 2024, we still have some renovations that need to be done at Van Pelt to make sure that we're ready for the transition that we're going to make. We also want to continue to have creative ways that we have, that we keep our emerging technology specialists. If you've seen any of the articles about the virtual reality that we're doing in our schools, and we do think that we've got to connect our students to the latest and greatest technology, because we know that whatever is the latest and greatest today will be out of date tomorrow. So, we, if we don't stay abreast, our students only get further behind. We want to make sure that we have their all educational resources available to our students so that our teachers aren't spending money on Amazon to fulfill, to fill things up in their classroom. We also want to expand our gifted program. Currently, that is an area that we need to grow in and to do a better job in, and so we hope to add gifted stipends to our budget this year so that we have a gifted coordinator in each school. We also want, you know, one of, another challenge that we're currently facing, and we're facing all over the nation, is chronic absenteeism. You know, it was an issue before the pandemic, but after schools closed in the spring of 2020 and reopened at various levels the following year, absenteeism has skyrocketed. And we are having a hard time with, with a certain group of our students re-engaging them back in school, and so we've got to focus on that as well. You know, during, one of the good things that come out of COVID is we did receive a lot of federal funds, and we were able to fill some positions that we hadn't had in a long time, especially in the area of behavioral and mental health. And we hope to keep those positions in this budget as we spend down the remaining portions of our COVID funds. And we also, we know that in order to be a successful school system, we have to have the very best employees, especially the best teachers that we possibly can have. And so, we want to continue to work to improve our compensation package, and that includes our health insurance benefits. And that will include, this budget does include currently a five percent salary increase for all employees. So, probably as we go through this budget season, the three words that you'll hear about the school budget the most are required, local effort. So, I wanted to take a little bit of time just to talk about that. I think you're all familiar, I know Mr. Holmes is familiar, that there are three iterations of the budget that are out currently. The final budget will be the conference budget. We are basing all of our numbers on the governor's budget, because that's the, the one that we started with, and to make changes now would be premature. But I will tell you that required local effort, the estimated required local effort for our city, based on the government, governor's budget, is seven-point-four million dollars. It does go down just a little bit in the House budget, but it will go up significantly if the Senate budget is approved. I think experience tells us that the final budget will probably wind up somewhere in between that House and the Senate version from the total amount that we receive from the state, but also the total amount that'll be expected from the city. So, even though I don't anticipate that the total required effort will reach seven-point-seven million dollars for the City of Bristol, I do think at the end of the day, it will exceed seven-point-four million. But again, that's just my, my prediction. And so, just a quick budget summary. First of all, I'll talk about the, the funds. We call these, the, most funds that we have in our school system, we can't carry over. If we have a balance at the end of the year, we either have to give it back to the city or ask the city to let us carry that over. These accounts are those that we carry over every year, and they are self-sustaining from a school nutrition standpoint. The textbook fund, we can carry those funds over. Our capital fund, we can. And then there is now a school construction fund that was created in the General Assembly this past year. And so, those funds can be carried over, and so that's a quick summary of those. Those expenditures are estimated. We, we know that we will not exceed those revenue amounts, but the expenditures are just an estimate. But really, the important part of the budget, the part that affects city council and our citizens the most is the general fund budget. Again, I said, we are basing this on the governor's budget, which came out in December. That budget included a five percent raise for SOQ-funded positions. We also plan to transition, or currently, our hourly employees are not on a step system, which causes a lot of inconsistencies and some issues with hiring. And we hope to trans, transfer those pay scales over to a step system as well. We will have, as I guess the city had the same health insurance increase of ten percent. We plan to cover that increase for employees. If they take the thousand-dollar deductible employee-only plan, there will be some increases for employees who take those other plans, but we are covering, we do plan to cover that with this budget. And again, to continue the, the, using Esser funding as much as we can to keep the behavioral specialists. One of the worst things that's come out of the pandemic is the changes in behavioral and mental health of our students. You, you read stories about it all over the nation, and you see it in society as a whole. And we really believe that we've got to find a way to keep these behavioral specialists, these mental health specialists in our schools. About the same time the pandemic hit, changes were made to way, Medicaid funds, the behavioral health services that are provided by Highlands Community Services. So, you don't hear many people say, "Thank God for the pandemic," but school systems do say, "Thank God for the pandemic," because we were losing vital mental health resources about the same time the pandemic started. And had we not had COVID funds to fill that gap, our students would have lost those services completely. So, a summary of the general fund budget, as you'll see, in the, the general state revenue, we will see a slight increase from the state based on the governor's budget. However, we will, in the restricted area, we'll see a significant decrease in funding from the state. Our federal revenues will also have a significant decrease. Keep in mind, that is because of the influx that we had of COVID funds. We, we reacted to COVID much differently than some school divisions, as we spent a lot of our COVID funds on the front end to get schools open. A lot of school divisions are still trying to spend down their COVID funds because they didn't get schools open and didn't have those early expenses, so they're kind of rushing at the backside to get those COVID funds spent. That was not our case. Obviously, I, I'm sure you're aware that we have requested a one million, approximately a one-million-dollar increase in local revenue, and then our other, our other revenues. So, for a total general fund revenue budget request of forty-one million dollars, which is a six-point-four-million-dollar decrease from last year. This is a breakdown of how those expenditures go. A three-million-dollar decrease in our instructional budget, a slight increase in administration, attendance, health, and transportation facilities. You'll see a three-point-three-million-dollar decrease there as well. You'll remember, out of the sixteen million dollars that we had in COVID funds, we did spend a pretty significant amount on improving our facilities, including a two-million-dollar down payment on purchasing the new school. Technology is a slight increase, but a total, this shows just the total, again, the total decrease in the general fund budget of just under six-point-five million dollars. So, we are presenting a balanced budget. Our revenues do equal our expenditures. We anticipate changes in this as the conference budget is approved. I did see an article online that potentially, when the General Assembly comes back for a special session in April, that they might have a budget deal. We hope and pray that it does, and that we're not waiting to the last minute to make these decisions, because it makes it very hard on school divisions and city councils if you're trying to make those decisions at the last minute. So, we're really hopeful that that'll happen in mid-April. There are some things that we are not, we were not able to include in this budget. We need an additional special ed teacher, some additional purchase service in our maintenance department. We have some software needs that we continue to need. Our nurses have requested additional medical supplies. And then, again, there are some continuing positions that are currently funded federally that we're going to lose that funding in the near term, and so we, we, we hope to go ahead and move those over to the state and local side, but we are unable to do that in that budget. But that's going to be a continuing need that we have as we move into the future. Just to give you a quick update on what we, how we plan to spend some capital funds in addition to building a brand-new, state-of-the-art, twenty-first-century learning environment on the campus of Van Pelt. We are going to be doing a library renovation at Van Pelt. That school, as you remember, will be a pre-K kindergarten, first-grade school. So, the size of the library is, we're, we're going to be able to cut that down and add two additional classroom spaces there. We also have to do some fire alarm additions there. We're working on, if you've been to our swimming pool lately, you'll know that there's some much-needed attention to, to the pool entrance on that side of the school. We're doing some door replacements at Virginia High School. Many of those doors are the exit, the doors that were installed when the, the building was built, and especially right around the pool area where we have a lot of chlorine, chlorine in the air. We've got a lot of rust, but we're able to do a lot of that with our COVID money as well. And we're going to continue to update our bus fleet and do, obviously, as we do every year, some painting of interior and exterior portions of our buildings. So, just kind of to give you a, a quick summary, this shows the, our, the total request that we have of eight-point-five million dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four. Obviously, that is a, a million-dollar increase, but if you go back to 2019, actually, if you go back before that, you'll see even more decreases in the local appropriation. But what was happening at that same time is that the state was requiring the locality to give more money. And even though the city for several years was not able to give more money to the school system, the amount they were required to give was going up. So, back in 2019, the city was given one-point-seven million dollars more than what they were required to give by the state. And you can see that trend line going down. Even with giving the one million dollars extra this year, we still won't reach the 2019 amount of above required local effort. Keep in mind that required local effort and the state match that goes along with it only funds those SOQ-funded positions that the state has out there. I'll give you a little history about, or just a quick history about that in just a second. This slide demonstrates if, if you were not to give the additional one-million-dollar request. I don't know in the history of the City of Bristol if we've been that close to not meeting required local effort, but that is, you're just going to be barely above the required local effort amount if you don't give an increase in this upcoming budget cycle. So, what will that mean if, if that's the case, if there is a, if we do not get the full million-dollar increase? Obviously, we would have to make cuts on our side. You know, when you start looking at those big-ticket items, one of the things that we would have to look at is eliminating the thirteen mental health supports that we're currently keeping in the budget this year. Another way that we could look at it is, we, we could, we could only Another way that we could look at it is, we could only give raises to those positions that are actually funded through the SOQ. The SOQ, I should say, is standards of quality. They're probably more like standards of mediocrity, but that is, actually, that's just the formula that the state uses to fund public education. And so out of the 400-and-some-odd positions that we have in our school system, only 186 of those are partially funded through the SOQ. Most of them are funded, most of those 186 are fully funded through the SOQ. Some of those are only partially funded. And to give you an idea of how that works, we have a .30 LCI. That means that 30% of those positions should be funded by the locality. The other 70% would be funded by the state. For the remaining 265 non-SOQ-funded positions, those are funded either completely through the additional appropriation that we receive from the locality, or through the federal funds that we receive. So obviously, if we're not able to meet this budget, and we worked very closely with city staff as we made this budget request, we're at the point now, as the local requirement goes up, we also anticipate it going up again in the future, because property values and gross incomes and sales tax revenues are going up as well. And so it's one of those situations, pay me now or pay me later, because we do anticipate that required effort is going to continue to go up. The lowest locality that I've been able to find, that's, that last year, I think, was 6% above required local effort. And of course, if we drop down to where we are now, we're going to be even further below that. And so that is, even though it was with some trepidation that we asked for that significant increase, I think if you were on city council last year, you'll remember that I warned that this was potentially going to happen based on the biennial budget last year and the request, and we understood why we couldn't make that request work last year. But I did warn that this was potentially going to happen this year. And again, I'm sharing that it is, you know, that's the reality now, and I also anticipate that we'll have these similar increases, if not more, moving into the next year by any. And so with that, we'll share a little bit of artwork, since we have just finished up with, or right in the middle of National Art Month, and we're celebrating that in our schools. Happy to answer any questions that you may have or provide any additional detail. You will have a copy of our entire budget book and all the supporting documents that go along with that. This is just a brief overview of our request of $8.5 million from city council.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Perrigen. I'll go ahead and open it up to any questions or comments.
I'll go ahead. Thank you, Dr. Perrigen, for the presentation, and thank you for all you do for our school system. And I'll have to say, I think we have the best schools around. So I wanted to go back to what you were saying about the ask for the $1 million and how, right now, we are barely above the required local effort. Is that, so that's where we're at now, but if we do the $1 million, where would that put us?
We would be about $1.1 million above.
I mean, I'm just trying to think out loud about our budget. You know, we're in a tight budget constraints and what we're looking at cutting. This is not an area that I want to cut on, especially for education and our children. So I think just being clear, and so the council understands how important this is. And then also, it's scary to think that we're barely above that amount, and so I hope that we can figure out a way to do that.
That is, keep in mind, you can go, you can go below that amount, but every state dollar that's attached to the dollar that you go below, we lose that state funding as well. So the 30% that the city is required to pay, if you don't pay that amount, then you lose the 70% that's connected to the state dollars as well. So it's not just that reduction in the local funds, it would also be a reduction in a significant portion of state funds as well. And really, truly, we just, we can't make it work if we go below that. I mean, we're already working on a shoestring budget and doing everything we can to make things work. And so a reduction, as you can see, you know, about 80% to 85% of our budget is tied up in personnel and benefits. And so those cuts are going to have, you know, cuts of that size, you know, $1 million, $999,000, it has to affect personnel. And whenever you affect personnel, then you affect the quality of services that our students are receiving.
Yep. Thank you.
Your budget for last year showed a lot of one-time spending, correct?
There was a lot in the capital. There was some recurring spending, but it is not permanently recurring spending. And that would be the positions that we were able to pay with Esser funds and some of our federal funds outside of Esser.
Would we be able to see a presentation? I like the summary that you give here. It helps make things a lot clearer than seeing the full budget, which you'll give us later. Would we be able to see some of those numbers with the one-time spending, particularly the federal funding pulled out, so we can see a little more apples-to-apples comparison?
Sure, and I can give you a quick summary of that, really, right here. You know, that if you look back, there is a $5.5 million reduction in federal spending. And then you look over here on this side, and you'll see that there's a $3.3 million reduction in facilities and a $3.3 million reduction in instruction. That is where those reductions are in the big picture. But we can, yeah, we can share that at a more broken-down level if you need to see. Actually, it'll be in the budget for you, and it may just be that you and I need to sit down and show you where it is. But you'll get that full line item budget probably first thing in the morning.
Some of those things, it would be useful to know what kinds of things they went towards, because instruction would make it seem critical, but it's obviously something that came from federal sources that was only intended for a short-term thing. Thank you.
But keep in mind that those federal dollars filled the gap for those services that we lost when Medicaid started changing the way they reimbursed community service agencies that were working in our schools, filling those other much-needed gaps.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. I know that, you know, we've got some big decisions to make, you know, fiscally over the next, you know, couple months, but, you know, as with public safety, you know, funding education is a very important endeavor for a locality to do, so I hope that we can find a way forward to, find a way forward to work through this and get you all the funding you need. I don't want to speak for the whole of council, but, you know, I think that education should be a funding priority, so, so thank you very much.
Let me just leave you with a little bit of hope. And so Mr. Holmes will know that Delegate O'Quinn worked really hard to get the school construction assistant program included in last year's budget. The application was finally released early, really at the end of February. We got our application in about two days later. We are eligible for $7.4 million in additional state assistance for our new school. And so if that comes through, that deadline ends on March 31st. I think the state would expect us to take part of that, the $2 million down payment that we made on the new school, and put that back in Esser funds, which could help with some of those mental health positions otherwise that we could spend over the next year. It'll also help us to take care of some, you know, we did not choose the best floors of the school. We chose the cheapest floors and just knew that we'd have to work harder to keep them clean, so we can make some improvements like that. But at the end of the day, after this is all said and done, I do anticipate between $3 and $4 million being available to the city to help pay principal payments on the new school over the next few years. And so we're really excited for the Board of Education to see that application and hopefully get approval very soon. And so I think that could also help with, not only the immediate needs that the city has, but also help offset some costs that we'll have in the future.
Very good. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that, before we jump into our next agenda item, because I see some sleepy faces out there, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We are back. Jumping right back into it, item five is a presentation of new transit development plan. Mr. Dietrich.
Mayor, members of council. For the past 10 months, Mr. Carl Wickenman with Nelson Nygaard has been working with City Transit and the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation to develop a new transit development plan for Bristol, Virginia. He will provide a presentation of the new TDP. There'll be a two-week period for any necessary modifications to the plan, and then the final plan will be brought before council at the March 28th meeting for approval. So I'll just turn it over to Mr. Wickenman.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I know you've had a long agenda. The transit development plan and this major update of it, this will be the first since 2016 for the City of Bristol and Bristol, Virginia Transit. And it is a requirement by the Virginia DRPT for its grantees to complete these plans. On an annual basis, they're given minor updates, but every six years, they need a more substantial change, and that is what we are presenting to you tonight. It becomes a point of reference for going after grant funds from the DRPT. So the projects that you're seeking grant funding for, they'll ask the question, is that in your transit development plan? So they have a fairly specific methodology for how these plans are developed, and the contents of the presentation follow that. I will spend more time on the recommendations, because that's kind of maybe the most critical piece, and run through some of the other elements a little bit more quickly. So we look at the background of the existing transportation system, and since we met with stakeholders of the community, I think it's worth noting, there's, that not everyone knows that there are three fixed routes that are currently serving the city, and then paratransit service for persons with disabilities who are unable to use that fixed route service. Those fixed routes do deviate 3/4 of a mile off of, by request, off of their fixed alignment. There are, there's no service on Saturdays and Sundays, and service runs from 7:00 to 6:00 on, so there's really no evening service as well. The City of Bristol is fairly comparable to a lot of small-town rural areas. The population is older, the median incomes are a little bit lower. It is notable that the no-vehicle households are higher in the city than they are in the state. That is not common with small towns. This is a quick look at the annual ridership by fiscal year over the past five years, ending with FY 2022. FY 2021 saw the largest hit due to the COVID-19 pandemic. There was sort of shut down for quite a bit of that year. And based on where the ridership is now, it's about 20% lower than where it was before the pandemic, and that is actually a fairly common thing that we are seeing nationally in public transportation ridership. There's not yet been the recovery, and there's probably some permanent changes in behavior. Most people do pay their fares here by cash, and so it looks like the legend got cut off. I apologize about that. As part of looking at the system, we interviewed stakeholders, and we also interviewed riders. So the stakeholder was 11 interviews. They were held in person back in September, along with some virtual interviews. The crux of it were really two main things came out very consistently. Number one, those we were talking to didn't know very much about the transit system in Bristol, suggesting the need for better marketing and better information to the community. And second, especially with the fact that this is a tourist destination, the service hours don't seem to work very well for that, ending at 6:00 p.m. and not operating on weekends. So those were a couple of key takeaways. We compared Bristol to peers. I will note that on operating costs per hour, which is basically the amount of service you get for every dollar invested, Bristol, Virginia Transit was the lowest among peers. And so that's a positive thing. It's a little closer to the mean for passenger trip. That just means that there's not quite as much usage per vehicle hour as there are in some of the other peers. We also conducted an onboard passenger survey. 40% of the users have incomes under $10,000, so very transit-dependent in terms of ridership. We collected 45 onboard passenger surveys over two days. This was in September. There's about 130 customers that ride daily, but some of those trips are back and forth, so we weren't duplicating responses. For them, the addition of Saturday service was ranked highest among all the possible priorities that we provided them. So I do want to go through recommendations, and they fall into a few buckets. Some changes to the existing route structure that could be done without a cost, and those were identified by staff for the short term. Some longer-term service expansion designed to meet what we heard from the community, which will center around the longer hours. Additional marketing and outreach, funding, and then finally, the capital improvements So in the short term, of the three routes, the best performer is the Falls Walmart service, which is a fairly direct service. So we made no recommendations for changes there, but we made some slight, this is, these are very modest adjustments. Again, no change to the service hours are recommended, and a similar operating cost to the current. And these could be implemented as quickly as FY, as quickly as the next fiscal year, because they don't make a, they don't have a budget requirement to them. For, the East Bristol was to serve a few areas that are not currently served. The West Bristol route was designed, it's a little circuitous here, but it's even more so in the current operating configuration. So as, so one thing that is noted with the service to the Hard Rock Casino is that it's fairly straightforward to get there, no more than 15 minutes, straight out State Street with a little bit of a deviation, but the trips back right now can take over 40 minutes. This will trim some of the time off, but to do more so would cut off some of the current customers, so it was decided not to pursue that. So for the more medium-term services within the plan, what we have is the introduction of micro-transit service. And so just to be clear in terms of what that is for those who do not know, it's something that's sort of developed within the transit industry over the last five to 10 years, very much so in response to the loss of transit ridership to ride-sharing services like Uber and Lyft. So many of the same customer bases are leaving transit. They're able to spend more money for Uber, Lyft trips, but they find those more convenient. So it's, how do we bring the convenience that people are seeking into the transit sector itself? So it would create an app for the service. It would still be operated by the City of Bristol with current operators, but customers would be able to schedule through an app. There would be a backend solution developed in order for your drivers to meet those customer demands. We see two applications for the micro-transit service. And so, actually, let me start with the first thing, the first recommendation is a study to further look at micro-transit service in the next fiscal year, and that is through a grant from the Virginia DRPT that has been requested. So presuming that that grant is funded, a study... Virginia DRPT that has been requested. So presuming that that grant is funded, a study, and those consultants tend to be more focused on the technology piece, developing the technology, et cetera, to look at the micro-transit program. With that said, our recommendation for it is, in the medium term, to replace the East Bristol service. This is the lowest ridership-performing route currently. The route serves a lot of local residential streets. Sometimes you get customers, sometimes you don't. So the micro-transit way of providing service can be more efficient because then you're not visiting homes, not visiting bus stops when there are no people waiting for them. It also makes the path of travel more direct for other customers when they're not, you know, venturing off on different roadway tangents. So micro-transit service would be to set up a zone. Anyone within that zone can reserve the service. Our recommendation for fare would be equivalent to the existing fixed route service, and so this would cover all of the geography that's currently covered by the East Bristol route. It would also allow you to expand to the park, to the, at the very northeast corner of the city. The second concept for micro-transit is in-service expansion. So the evening and Saturday micro-transit, we are proposing that that would be done in two steps, initially for the weeknight, late-night service, and then later on for Saturday service. The weeknight service would, so those are the operating costs that we anticipate, six, in 2023 dollars, and again, beginning with a service area, the same service area for both evening and Saturday. We heard a lot from the community about can we develop a circulator, especially for tourists, for evening and late-night service. So we've developed that and placed it in the plan as a, as a little bit later development. In other words, you start with the micro-transit service, you build a ridership, and then that circulator route comes in later, operating within the same service parameters. So you should see comparable amounts in terms of the actual need for operating costs. So marketing and outreach, this includes not just getting the message out of BVT and what it does, but also learning from the customers, having a little bit better measures and methods for hearing back from the customer. So in the beginning years, what we're suggesting is additional dissemination of information, the putting together of pamphleture, ensuring that it's current, the printing, so some of the maybe lower-budget methods. Also, when we met with stakeholders, there were quite a number of them who were quite willing to, yes, you know, if you put a kiosk here, whether it be the business owner or somebody who knows a location, that would gladly present that, just so that the information is more available throughout the community. And then in some of the later years, looking at the brand, and so just as an outsider, if you look at the branding of the Bristol, Virginia buses compared to the Bristol, Tennessee buses, it's not immediately apparent that the BVT side is a sort of a general-purpose public transportation service, and some of that is the buses they choose, but some of it is how well those vehicles are branded. So that is a medium-term to reconsider the brand, and then there's an allowance for additional media advertisement in some of the later years of the plan. The capital improvements are mostly replacement of the existing fleet. There's some expansion that would again be paid for through DRPT grants for the micro-transit service, and then at the very last year of the plan, we have in there an allowance for electrification of the fleet. So that's something that we brought to the attention of the city of Bristol. There's only seven fleet vehicles, even with the expansion on the transit side. So the understanding has to be that any electrification on transit really needs to coincide with a larger fleet-type replacement with the city of Bristol. It wouldn't really make a lot of sense to do that merely on the transit side. So that, so it's in the plan. Obviously, if grant funding or whatever allows you to accelerate that for other uses, it's in the plan for grants on the transit side as well. This is a summary of all of those needs and priorities. In terms of the costs, this is actually the operating costs. Over the course of the 10 years, from 2023 to 2032, there is a 58% increase in the cost of service. A small portion of that is marketing, since that's an operating cost. There is the hours increase of 22.5% to pay for the late-night and Saturday service additions, and then the balance of those cost increases are our anticipated rate of inflation. So these are year of expenditure, so a lot of those cost increases are attributable to inflation. The capital needs are quite uneven, largely because they're based on when vehicles need to be replaced, and that is, as you can see, the blue bars are the lion's share of this. Some of the bus stops, we've put allowances in periodically for things, especially for bus pull-offs, which are a little bit more substantial. Those are kind of opportunistic-type things, whether they're needed or not, but there's some budget in the plan to account for those. And then this is what I told you in the micro-transit program, $50,000 for a planning study that would be paid for by a grant that has been applied for. I don't think it's been awarded yet from DRPT. The $30,000 in upfront costs to develop an app, that would be, that's part of that grant application. Two new micro-transit vehicles are part of that grant application, but then obviously, the service costs, especially for anything that's expansion, would be local funding. These are the total marketing and customer outreach. Generally, best practice in transit is to have about 3% of the operating budget in the marketing and customer outreach program, and so this, it doesn't equate to that in each and every year because we've programmed some events within the plan, but from FY '26 to FY '32, the marketing and customer outreach budget starts to approximate that 3%. So this is the financial plan summary on operations. Most of that is local dollars. The, an important piece is that the state funding is presumed to increase by only 1% throughout the course of the plan. That's based on the state of Virginia's budgets, and so obviously, you know, the rates of inflation that we presume are higher than that. So the state percentage shrinks as the plan goes on. The federal share is presumed to be roughly following in line with inflation. And then these are the capital improvements. The local share is only 12% here, so it's a much smaller piece. Most of the capital improvements, especially with the bus replacements and bus stops, there's an 80% match on federal dollars, and then the state of Virginia also contributes. Not all of the capital improvements recommended are eligible, so that's why it's not quite an 80-16 breakout. And with that, thank you for your attention and for the opportunity to speak with you, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions or comments.
What's the difference between a circulator versus fixed route?
There really isn't any difference. It's really, it's really all in the terminology. So kind of if you're marketing to, it was the term that a lot of the stakeholders used when we spoke to them. So it's just there to differentiate what would be a late-night Saturday service fixed route versus the other fixed routes that you currently run.
You're talking about developing a mobile app. Well, what's the primary purpose of that? Will it allow requesting micro-transit or accessibility?
Yeah, yeah. So it would essentially allow, currently, your customers are able, again, to have the bus flex off the route three quarters of a mile. If there's a phone call or if the person asks the operator, the operators often ask, in riding the bus when I was here, does anybody need to go to these sorts of places? So it kind of professionalizes that a little bit, and it makes it more accessible, especially for the riders who, that we met, have been riding for a while. They know the drivers. They sort of know how it works. I think the obstacle is for those who are new, not initiated, and so obviously, you know, a mobile app is what they're used to for Uber and Lyft, and so, yeah, it's for customer reservations.
Do you allow electronic payments, or is it just cash and prepaid cards?
We, well, there may be two questions there. The fare, so that could be part of it. You would have to probably set something up, you know, where usually the way that works is the person collecting the fare will take a cut, and usually it's not that cheap, you know, I think, you know, 15% to 20% often in the transit world. But if it's new riders that you're attracting, that might be a small price to pay. So, you know, some of that is left up for the app development. In most cases, in some transit agencies, they have their own separate mobile app, and then they do some integration. Obviously, there's no existing mobile app here. So that is a functionality that may be provided on that once that app's developed.
Well, the report said that you're using electronic fare boxes.
That's right.
So I didn't know if those allowed electronic payments.
Well, no. Electronic fare boxes still take cash. They just, it's just not the dropbox where the driver sees it. It's actually counting the money for you and that type of thing. But most, unless you buy the mobile app from the fare box vendor, there's not, there's not automatic, it's not necessarily an automatic scan, like you scan your phone and it clicks you on. Even in larger systems that have mobile apps, a lot of times those are flashpasses that the operator's looking at.
Well, it wasn't necessarily tying it to the mobile app, just the ability to make electronic payments, whether that's with a credit or debit card, a subscription card.
And so, to my knowledge, I don't know of a transit agency that collects with credit cards on the vehicle. Virtually all of them are collecting through some sort of mobile application, website, et cetera, if they have an electronic payment option, or ticket-vending machines at, you know, major rail systems, but you obviously don't have those.
What about membership, subscription cards, rather than prepaid six-trip cards, something that say auto refills or a monthly subscription or something along those lines?
Yeah, those are actually fairly common. So monthly passes, weekly passes, you know, those are certainly things that the city of Bristol probably should explore, rather than just having the six rides for five, the cost of five rides as you do now. Yeah.
Well, no questions, just a quick comment. Thank you for coming tonight to present this to us. And we talked a lot earlier about tourism and bringing people into the city, and then this is more about bringing people, getting them around in the city, and whether it's visitors or residents, mainly residents a lot of times, but it's important for us to have this plan and for us to continue these discussions going forward, long-term, to figure out how to make it easiest overall.
One thing I should point out about the late-night service is Bristol is currently served by the Virginia Breeze route in our city, but it comes back here, I think, between nine and 10 o'clock. So it's well after your service hours have ended, so there's really not an opportunity for that connection because of service hours.
I like the new signage at the stops. I know that you're talking about planning further studies, but I think this is a good improvement. Is it possible for routes to run slightly into the county, say to the Highland Center?
That is, that is something we did not do, you know, based on kind of the instruction from city staff, simply, you know, just because of the jurisdictional issues. You know, you're funding it, and there's benefits outside of the city. With that said...
Technically, Walmart is as well.
Yeah, with that said, there was a lot from other stakeholders of can there be better connections with both Bristol, Tennessee? You know, you've got the one connection right now, but if you go to the west side, you've got to come back into the city to change. And the DMV in Abingdon was a request from some of the social services agencies we met that the connection there could be improved, so.
Mr. Pollard, just to let you know, there, because of how we receive federal funding, there's urban funding, and then there's rural funding, and if you come out of what's considered an urban area into a more rural area, then you may lose some of, you may not get reimbursements for those types of trips just because of the way the feds fund the transit system. So that's also a consideration.
So is Walmart part of the urban area?
No, it is part of the urban area, yeah.
Target's part of the rural area.
I don't know off the top of my head, but yeah, I mean, there are some things. That's some of the problems between, say, Bristol and Abingdon. You know, there's rural, what's the Census Department considers rural versus urban, and can we run in those areas or not since we are an urban-area transit system?
So it might be useful to see if we can tighten our connection with, say, Mountain Link to help us with some of those areas.
And they do run in some of the urban areas, too, and I know that Melanie Fleener, when she was here, had come, you know, because they do run into those urban areas, and we split some of that money, and some of that was for some of that.
One more quick question, since it was brought up about the Virginia Breeze. I'm not sure who to direct this to, but of course, now the stop is at Exit 5, at the park-and-ride there. If that was, if that's a plan for that to stay there, I feel like there was maybe a discussion once about maybe that would change at some point in the future, whether it be downtown or possibly down to Exit 1 right off the interstate when the casino, you know, and hotel develops, if that would be more of a location?
I think that's probably more of a state question, but that is something that we could, you know, talk to them about.
All right, very good. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate you hanging in here with us.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Item six, resolution for landfill expenditure reimbursement. One person has signed up for public comment, and that is Mr. Kellogg.
Good evening, Council. Joel Kellogg, 1204 Maryland Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee, here tonight on behalf of Hope for Bristol and the citizens of both Bristols. Here to, I guess, reiterate our ask for a community safety plan. Have tonight an additional... Have tonight an additional 176 signatures. So I'll get those to, to the mayor for me, please. We still feel that it's imperative that some sort of protections are put in place for our residents, especially during the upcoming drilling here. I know, and I see, there's a lot of asks, but the, the ask for the health and, health and safety of our community is paramount. That's first and foremost. You know, going back to the landfill open house that we had, and it's, there seemed to be a, a distinction between Bristol, Tennessee residents and Bristol, Virginia residents. It, it doesn't matter. You know, I have a large maple tree in our front yard. If that was to fall on my neighbor's house, I'm liable for that, and I'll own up to that. So if your landfill is blowing in to Tennessee, that doesn't matter what state that is. It's still Bristol. These are still your residents. Does that make sense? Been to a lot of these meetings here lately, and we have, you know, pro-life, pro-birth, We want to talk about protecting the children, you need to think about protecting the ones that are born, that are here now, that are suffering from this. That's where your attention needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Next item is staff report.
Uh, Council, tonight. Counsel. Counsel, before you deny, you have a resolution for landfill expenditure reimbursement. The city has agreed, or soon will agree, to finance portions of the costs associated with the closure and the remediation of its landfill. It's anticipated that the city will use funds under its current control to be advanced to pay costs related to the landfill closure and remediation prior to such time as the city may be prepared to issue one or more, one or more series of tax-exempt bonds to finance the closure and remediation. The city intends for a portion of the proceeds from the future bond issuance to be available to reimburse the city for payment of expenditures. So basically, what this does is it allows us to pay the general fund back for any funds that we expend out of the general fund from a, from the future bond issuance.
All right, thank you very much. So the agenda I have says reading of a resolution followed by motion and second, but I think we would need the motion and second first, wouldn't we?
I think so, yes.
So looking for a motion and a second for-
Also move.
And this can be by, can this be by caption only, Mr. Eaves?
Please.
This can be by caption only or in full?
Uh, move for this, let me see, was this-
Reading of the resolution.
First reading of the resolution by caption only. Or is this only reading?
This is only reading.
Only, only reading of the resolution by caption only.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Pollard, second by Mr. Holmes, for reading of the resolution by caption only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, declaring its intention to reimburse the cost of certain expenditures.
All right, thank you. Council discussion?
Uh, it's my understanding that this is basically so that we can spend things now, then pay it back with the bonds later. Otherwise, it'd be considered revenue in the current period. The bond proceeds would be considered revenue in the current period, and now we're able to pay it out.
Do you want to answer that, Dana?
So basically, we can cover expenses in the current period from undesignated funds. Then in a later period, we get the bond proceeds, and we can reimburse the undesignated funds rather than considering it revenue in that period. Thank you. It's legal hurdles that we have to jump through. Exactly.
All right. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Item seven, supplemental budget appropriation totaling $355,058. Staff report.
Counsel, this is a supplemental budget appropriation for our schools. They have been fortunate to receive some additional grant funds. They've received $213,120 from the Department of Behavioral Health, and they've received $141,938 for other school improvement grant funds. This will simply add those funds to their current year budget so they can spend those in the current year. There are revenues that completely offset those expenditures.
Very good. So looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
I move that we approve this budget appropriation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Farnham, second by the vice mayor. Is there any discussion?
I'm glad to see a large number appropriation that doesn't involve the landfill.
That's nice, yes.
And we're getting money, yay!
Yes, and this is a, you know, obviously, this is just, this is a win for the schools, you know, to, to get this money to be able to use it, so we're glad to see it.
This is one, an example of why we encourage the city departments to look for grant opportunities, because they can be very beneficial. In this case, there is no local match whatsoever, and it will be very helpful to the schools to give this additional influx of cash.
No further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. Uh, section D is second reading of ordinances. Number one, second reading and ordinance to update Chapter 50, Article 2, Division 18, Section 50-242, definitions, addition, and deletion of permitted uses in Division 3, land uses, and Division 9, mixed-use districts. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Staff has determined that there are multiple permitted land uses in Division 3 land uses of the zoning ordinance that do not have a corresponding definition in Division 18. This ordinance update will add definitions for these land uses in addition to creating new land use definitions for terms that are not currently in code. The city council approved the first reading of this ordinance at its February 28th, 2023 meeting, and staff recommends, recommend, or approval on second reading.
All righty, thank you so much. So now we're looking for a motion and a second for second reading, and this can be in full or by caption only.
Uh, I move for second reading by caption only.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Farnham, second by Mr. Holmes. Is there any discussion?
I've heard people contacting me basically concerned that we're messing up the zoning. In this case, we are adding some long-needed definitions. There are terms that are already in our zoning, and this will add definitions to those terms, so it makes things a lot clearer and more straightforward than they were before. It's, it's some, it's cleaning up what we've already got and not making changes.
Yeah, I think, I think literally one of the things that was mentioned was it defines what a train station is, and we didn't really define that at some point.
Yeah, I mean, there are some things in there that seem like common sense, but you really need to have that definition for that use, so that it eliminates any kind of interpretation. Makes things easier for staff and for the public.
I agree. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 23 hyphen 3, amending Chapter 50, land use, Article 2, zoning, Division 3, Section 50 hyphen 31 and 32, land uses, Division 9, Section 50 hyphen 107, and Division 18, Section 50 hyphen 242, definitions of the Code of Bristol, Virginia.
All right, looking for a motion and a second to adopt.
I move that we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Farnham, second by the vice mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Number two, second reading of an ordinance to create a rental inspection program in accordance with Section 36 dash 105.1.1 of the Virginia State Code. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff has developed a rental inspection ordinance in accordance with Virginia State Code 36 hyphen 105.1.1. This item was presented at the February 14th, 2023 meeting for discussion, and the city council approved the first reading of the ordinance at its February 28th, 2023 meeting. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance on second reading.
All right, thank you so much. So we're looking for a motion and a second for the second reading, and this can be in full or by caption only.
I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right, uh, motion by the vice mayor, second by Mr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Uh, reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 23 hyphen 5, creating a rental certificate of compliance in Chapter 50, land use, Article 5, maintenance of premises, Division 4, Sections 50 hyphen 515 through 50 hyphen 530 of Code of Bristol, Virginia.
All right, thank you so much. Now looking for a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance.
I move, I move that we adopt the ordinance.
I'll second.
All right, motion from Mr. Holmes, second from Mr. Pollard. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right, and now on to the consent agenda, looking for a motion and a second to take action.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Farnham, second by the vice mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
There being no further business, we stand adjourned.